Okay, everything good? All right, we're going to proceed. Good evening to everyone, and thank you so very much for joining us this evening for Town of Fairmont Heights Mayor and Council Meeting for February 17th, the year 2021. At this time, I would like to officially open the meeting. And I would like to open it with a moment of silence and memory of everything that's happening within our community, our state, and in our world. Thank you all very much. At this time, I would like for us to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mayor Seeger. All right. We're going to begin this evening with our
Mayor, you're muted.
Okay. All right, I took that for minutes on January 12th, this is our work session in the year 2021. I was back in January 28th, about town meeting, year 2021. As everyone has the opportunity to review your minutes. Councilmember B here, he has the opportunity. I need to know whether everyone has the opportunity. If you have the opportunity to review. Over. Now can you second on that? The problem is if that is that the two sets of minutes, one for January 12th and one for January 28th be approved. Are there any questions on the motion?
Excuse me, Mayor? You may, you may need to move to another room. If you're in the room with somebody else that has a Zoom on.
Do you want us to turn the other Zoom off?
Uh, you could do that, yes.
So you want us just to use the telephone? Tell us what to do, Mr. Gray, so we have the screen right now.
No, so the, the audio from somebody else's uh, um, PC or laptop is, is actually affecting your audio.
All right. Okay, so, all right, so now, what's the best solution? Okay. That's what's wrong with you, okay. Councilmember Moss, can you just? Okay, but you can't hold on. Okay, okay. All right, so you're off anyway. So, yeah, so is there anything else we need, Mr. Gray?
No, that's better than it was.
Okay. All right, we'll proceed. Proceed.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, um. Yeah. We have, um, we have the second. Second minute, that's a minute for January 12th and January 28th. Are there any questions? Is there any questions?
Yes. All right, Mayor Morgan? Councilmember, yeah, council, announce your name.
I'm Dr. Waka.
Fucking Dr. Waka? Councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Haggard. Councilmember Dotson. Dotson. Councilmember Morris. And Councilmember Waiters.
Thank you very much, I have added any names. Thank you very much, those two sets of minutes are approved. At this time, we will hand the report to our police department, as we said, I was here. You have the report, Councilmember, Councilmember, I can do. Police Department.
Heights Police Department total.
The law in January. Four blocks. Down. Block.
Um, I post it all. Okay, do I need to start over? Okay, updates. Firearms entry level and regular qualifications conducted for reserve officers. Continue compliance with the Maryland Police Training Commission standards being made and accomplished by NIBR National Incident Base Reporting System. Will be the law enforcement's community standard for qualifying crime, which will help law enforcement and community, communities use resources more strategically in 2021. In the upcoming, in the upcoming future. For the beginning of the new year, Maryland State Police and the FBI were not ready for the inflammation to begin due to minor setbacks. Fairmont Heights Police commits cops, community oriented police unit will be moving forward with its domestic violence program. Uh, with I am brushed, but I'm bruised, but not broken. The collaboration together will be a follow-up initiative for resources for victims. The Fairmont Heights cops unit will also be having the faith-based community collaboration prayer breakfast. Clergy Police Academy, we are having the faith, faith-based community collaboration prayer breakfast. With clergy, police academy, with, with the clergy, police academy. We are still monitoring COVID restrictions for the new year. Fairmont Heights Police Department will participate in, in the support of, of the, in, in the death of ring-belted police officer Christine Peters, who assisting on a traffic stop while struck by a vehicle. Um, in other words, they all attended her funeral. Uh, Prince George's County Police continues to assist Fairmont Heights Police Department with local patrolling. That concludes the police department report.
This is the monthly reports from January 12th, 2021, first February, 2021. During this period, it issued a bond in line. Valen Lockwood. Allen Tyler. 1028, 88, 100 dollars. During this period, it is dealing against local authorities. Justice Public Service. 7096th Avenue. Thirty-eight dollars. Justice Public Service, 7096th Avenue. They signed it thirty-six dollars, three cents. Rico Roberto Salazar, if you think so, 8th Old Street, 110 dollars. Wayne's property located at 62nd Avenue, still to be retained.
Excuse me, Mayor, this is Kim Glenn, every other word you're speaking is fading out to the audience. We could hear Patricia Ugg very clearly, but every other word that you're speaking is fading out. This is not an effective meeting if we can't hear you properly.
Okay, there you go, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
No, I'm talking about Ms. Gray. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, I was talking about Mrs. Wayne's property at 708 62nd. And Mr. Pinkney is saying that it is still in need of attention. The property tax inquiry is enclosed, and I spoke with the attorney representing the purchaser, attorney Karen Othmet. She stated that her office is finding it difficult to serve Mrs. Wayne due to the court and COVID-19. Rising healthcare sent a check for $850 for their business license. The check was returned. Intermediate medical service still owes for their business license of $1,350. We held a virtual meeting with HIP and the builders of the net zero homes to be built on 60th Place. The town's parking lot still has excessive inventory. I am in need of a new computer or webcam. Gave Mayor Martin a copy of the old code enforcement book. Sent variance letter to the owner of the property located at 5903, with this 5903 L Street. Still waiting on vacant lot ordinance. The weather has been too cold to complete the repairs on the curb located at 716 62nd Avenue. On February 8th, 2021, Inspector Swan of D-Pi issued a correction order to 1005 58th Avenue. A unlawful continuance during a posted stop work order. B permit not obtained and fines not paid. C additional fines assessed. D a lift stop inspection is required prior to any work resuming. E special investigation fee, $4,043. So also there is the listing of the property tax inquiry for Mrs. Wayne. And a copy also of a correction order for a violation that he had listed. So that concludes the code enforcement officer's report. Okay, I'm going to continue down to the treasurer's report and, uh, Councilmember, I can do Waka. Are you going to read the treasurer's report or was it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Okay, can everybody hear me, um, everybody? Yes. Um, treasurer, treasurer's report, February 17th summary. Total assets as of January 31st, 2021. Eight hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Total assets include funds in the town's bank account and accounts receivables. Budget summary. We are seven months, fifty-eight percent, and to the fiscal year. Total revenue as of January 31st, 21 was sixty-five percent. General revenue, sixty-six percent. Intergovernment transfers, fifty-seven percent. Other revenue, forty-one percent. Police Department, three percent. This is an area of concern. As we shared with the, the mayor and council in the staff meeting, we need to meet with business owners with delinquent accounts for business license, licensing, operating property, property taxes. We also need to remove vehicles from the parking lot for rent, for renters that have failed to pay their monthly fees and have ignored notification. Total expenses as of January 31st, 21 was forty-two percent. Election, zero. Probably will not change, no election in FY 21. Legislative, thirty-four percent. Municipal, seventy-three percent. Public safety, thirty-five percent. Public works, fifty-five percent. Items submitted to the council at the staff meeting for review. Discussion at the work, discussion at the work session. Parking lot contract. Business license application. Vacant property registration, last. Parking study. Uh, RFP scope of work was provided by the county, a revised scope of work. Cooperative fuel agreement. Presented to the council by Lieutenant Ivy. Bulk trash form. Update, missing items. Signing sheet for staff and visitors. This item was not submitted for review at the staff meeting. I volunteered in the staff meeting to prepare the document for review. I discussed the council's request for a photographer. Due to the anticipated cost of this expense, an RFP will not be done. However, I will get quotes to ensure we receive a favorable price. The council did not object to this recommendation. Grant payments received since last town meeting. January 21st, 21. Received the final seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars due from the census grant. That concludes the treasurer's report. I apologize, I apologize. Uh, 1521 received the final two thousand, two hundred, thirty-three dollars due for the pocket park grant. That does conclude the treasurer's report.
All right, can everyone hear me? This is the town manager's report for January 5th, 2021 to February 9th, 2021. Public Works Department, snow removal and public works staff. The public work staff did a great job in maintaining the streets and sidewalks during the most recent snow and ice event. Mayor Martin, Councilmember Morgan, and I coordinated with the staff, giving instructions on times to report to work. Mayor Martin contacted the county Department of Public Works and Transportation to ensure sufficient orders of salt and sand were placed. I wish to thank the staff for reporting to work on time. No one was absent. The green team. The green team met on Thursday, January 28th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. The litter-free Fairmont Heights campaign was discussed and also discussed where the following new initiatives. Number one, creating a Maryland Green Registry. Number two, green purchasing policy. Number three, providing voluntary opportunities for citizens, engagement, and watershed stewardship. Team members volunteered for the following projects. Number one, schedule at least two cleanup weekends to focus on Nash Run. The removal of tires and debris. Mr. Barnhart and the Civic Association. Number two, spring beautification, Mrs. Capers. Number three, working with the mayor and the council to order trash cans, Councilmember Waiters and Wood Dotson. Stakeholders meetings with citizens residing in the impacted construction area of 60th Place Net Zero Housing District. And that meeting was held on the 11th. That was last, last week. Meeting with all stakeholders seeking input on redevelopment of Fairmont Heights. Working with Councilmember Waiters and Economic and Community Development Committee. Example, UKAP proposed the Florida development of Melvin's Crab House. Mr. Pinkney and I met with HIP, Warren Construction, and Peabody Architects on February 2nd, 2021. Worked with Councilmember Waiters, Mayor Martin, and Councilmember Wood Dotson on the Black History Program. She also has a flyer that she designed and that was put out for community output. This was concerned with net zero housing project. That meeting was on February 11th. And it was done in Spanish and in English, so that went out to the community. That is the end of the town manager's report. So all the reports have been read. And finalized. We're going to go down to old business. We got some, they can hear me. All right. I'm going to continue on, and I hope everyone can hear. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to continue. And the first item is our Black History events that we've had since the beginning of February. They started on February 5th. I hope everyone was able to participate or at least see the information that was posted on the Town of Fairmont Heights website or on our Channel 11 television station. And there was also a posting on YouTube to begin our process and to say the Town of Fairmont Heights, even though we couldn't have a in-person Black History Month presentation, we have four events planned that are virtual throughout the month of February. They, I will leave it to Councilmember Waiters to describe each one, and at this time, I would turn that over to, if you have access to that mic there. Councilmember, you could talk a little bit about the program and the two things that will follow for the rest of the month. Okay. Okay, cool. Yeah. Are you going to get it from here? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry for the technical. Don't mean to be rude. Still trying to get reconnected, um, for the remainder of the month. For the remainder of the month, for Black History Month, on Friday, we have the Nassau. Mathematician, physician, inventor Valerie, Dr. Valerie Thomas. Wanda Chowsen's an entrepreneur, blessed 24/7, who branded her African-American, branded her own, um, product. We have music and entertainment, surprise. On Thursday, this was an event that we had to rearrange with the, um, historic preservation. Where we will. Okay, where we will, um, African-American historic trails and landmarks that will take place on the 25th, which is Thursday of next week. On Sunday to 28th, from 3:00 to 4:00. Tea with the mayor, bring your own cup, mug, toddler, or tea. Access to council, we're joining, this is the time for us to close out the last session. The week, it starts, uh, Thursday, 25th at 7:30. Friday, the 19th, which is this Friday, the 7th, at 7:00. Sunday, tea with the mayor starts at 3:00. We encourage you to participate, it's been an awesome experience learning things about the community and others. Um, and the scavenger hunt. I forgot to mention the scavenger hunt the last time, based on the spirit. Artifacts and/or facts about our community, we have a, uh, what did I say? A, um, treasure hunt. Scavenger hunt.
Okay, scavenger.
Keep standing, treasure, scavenger hunt. And so at the very beginning, I'm in the very end, we have a prize, we'll define that and we'll share that at a later time. That's, um, if there is any questions.
All right. Uh, I hope everyone heard all the information about how our Black History Celebration will be scheduled this year.
Let me come back over, okay.
This year, I, I think because of the fact that everything is virtual, it's becoming so interesting, the variety that we've had. And I think the community has really enjoyed, I know last week, it was so enjoyable because we had a lot of personal experiences. I want to thank Councilmember Wood Dotson for talking about how things were during the time when she was coming up as a kid here in the town. And those were some of the same things that I talked about when I went on the TV station and when I went on YouTube, because that's the way this community was built, on experiences, African-American experiences. And it was done so that the families that came along behind our ancestors would have something that they could lean on, something called their very own. So you all please join in, uh, this coming Friday should be very interesting. Uh, Wanda, that owns 24/7. I have known her for a very long time. She used to operate down at Hampton Mall down there, and I used to always go near Christmas time to support her as a black business. She has been in business for a very long time. She made name cards for me, she has done all kinds of things because she's She made name cards for me, she has done all kinds of things because she's talented and she has the personality that goes along with her. She's a sweetheart. So, you know, I hope her business continues to thrive. And there are a lot of people, as we go through this month, that I've been trying to plug for, because a lot of these same people I used to work with, because I've always, like for 30 years, done part-time vending opportunities, conferences, and things like that. So a lot of these people I've met along the way. But it's so good to just sit back and remember them and wish them well as their businesses go forward into the New Year. So I wanted to ask, everyone, please join in. Make sure that you have the correct Zoom line so that you can get on and you can enjoy everything that's happening. It really brings joy when you find out everything that's been happening within this community. Oh, yes, yes. Mrs. Teresa Graves, our soon-to-be 100-year-old resident, was on the line, and she was so happy because of the fact that she was being recognized. You see, even little small things mean a lot to her. But I got online, and I talked about how much she meant to this community from day one, because Mrs. Graves was the person that I would see first thing in the morning if I got to leave for work, because I used to leave really early. And she would be out sweeping the streets every morning. She made sure all the trash and everything was out, you know, all the dead trash, every recycling. She attended all the meetings, and she was the neighborhood watch from day one. She was the neighborhood watch coordinator and the person that represented our street of 60th Avenue. So I'm so proud of her for doing that, and it's a tradition that she's done forever. And she seems to be so happy, even as she approaches 100 years old, she's just happy. That's so wonderful, so wonderful. So I'm gonna move on. I just wanted to elaborate on that a little bit. And I'm gonna move on down to the Net Zero Housing update. I hope the majority of the people on the line have opted to join the Net Zero Housing meeting on the 11th. The information was priceless. There was so much information there, and I won't begin to talk about it too much because Mrs., so Remy, I think, mentioned it slightly in her report, but it was very good information there. As a matter of fact, I think I had something on the back of this one that talked about the stakeholders meeting. Okay. Yeah. But anyway, that was a summary of what she said, but you'll be getting more information, especially for the people that live on 60th Place. There'll be several more meetings called, and the progress of that whole project will be coming out for the general residency to take a look at. It's really gonna be something that we're gonna be proud of, because this is the first opportunity since we had the town homes built right offshore of Roe. It's one of our first bits of housing and benefits to the citizens that are coming to the town. So it's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for it. I want to thank Senator Benson and all the people who made it possible for the Town of Fama Heights to participate. We have another agenda item here, and this item was set through Councilmember Hargrove. It just says Zoom meeting, so Councilmember, would you like to elaborate?
I am asking that all meetings be handled through Zoom. The reason being is because of complaints of the citizens not being able to hear. And I'm gonna say the break-ins of the complaints from the citizens, so I'm asking that our and our town hall meetings be conducted through Zoom. And I'm asking for a vote from the council to approve.
You're muted.
Okay, so Madam, okay, so Madam Mayor, we're gonna ask that that be put on the list for the Zoom meeting to be put on the next work session agenda and brought forward to the town hall meetings.
Okay, so that would be the March. Yeah. Okay. Right. Okay, so we, and then we have to qualify, I was trying to make sure that, to make sure it happened, or because I was really trying to make sure it didn't work.
But they would have utilized the system with the onboard and physically being able to see the attendance.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make sure. That'll be one of the items that we'll put on. We have about three items.
A correction to that, the Zoom falls under the pay grant, so the citizens are not paying for that. That service falls under the pay grant. We can go back and make sure that that's where it falls.
Well, I'm saying, okay, let me just say about that. Well, it is, it is, but not, and not only that.
It's not coming out of the taxpayer's dollars.
Okay, it was paid for by the CARES Act, so it was paid by the CARES Act, but still, like you said, it's accessible, it's town property, so it's fine, it's not a problem. We can easily make sure.
Can I hear? Can I hear? Can I hear?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to put it on, so that we can work out the logistics. They can't hear me now? Oh, okay, I'm unmuted.
But we've been dealing with Zoom for almost a year now, and maybe if this is a consistent thing of not being able to put on, we need to find out if there's phone of some capacity that we won't and utilize having to be able to utilize the service.
Yeah. Well, I want to just say this, I want to say this. When we are using the complete Zoom remote location, it works perfectly. Yes, ma'am, can you hear?
She has a common. So, so one of the comments there is that it's not, Zoom is not the problem. The problem is the council members are in the same, so headphones could be the solution to the problem.
Okay, well, so we have to figure out how it connects. That's why I brought this up, because I didn't know whether we were gonna need this to try to connect, but then when it dawned on me, even though this has a microphone and it can't be plugged in, we could probably get this. But we have all these problems when we're trying to do it from one room. If everybody's doing it from your location, it would work perfectly. On everything that we did, it worked perfectly. So that's something to think about. We'll put it on the March agenda, and we'll take it from there. I'm gonna make a.
Because we have one council member that can't hear on the phone. But as a conference, I see that's the, 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 the conference.
Okay. Well, I don't know how to do that, I don't know.
Every Zoom, every Zoom conference or session that you schedule has a conference number which would, can I come on, video, become a conference? And be active in the same process. Another thing that we're not using is that there's some discussions can be shared each other.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not to extent, but the council, we as a body have to learn how to use the tool, basically.
Right.
It's not, again, it's not that, um, disagree with council, which is absolutely right, but it doesn't require emotion to do it, it's just the logistics.
Okay, well, that's what we need to put on the agenda, the logistics. So we'll put that on, and actually, we need to make sure that that's added.
I just have a question for those who know more than I do. Would the conference and the Zoom be able to be done on a landline? Then I'm good.
Okay. All right. So, all right. March 9th, that's where it's at. All right, so I'm gonna make a note here.
But can I also make this a suggestion, because this tends to work, if we could do a couple of, um, training, not training sessions, but this schedule a testimony to come back and see prior to, and then.
Okay. We could, we could. Okay. All right, so make sure that gets on the agenda now. I need to, I have a running list of some items that don't always work out the same way. One of the main things that I'm putting back is that vacant lot ordinance that has to be done. The other one is the workplace COVID-19 policy. And so then we'll put Zoom in there too. So that's three, but really it's one more. I have to look back at my notes in the back, but that's already four for March. That's for work session.
Due to the very low recovery percentage that we have for the treasurer's report of the, regarding the business owners' license, I think we should also put back on the table the review of the collection notices that we did, that we redid.
Could you repeat that, please, about business owners? Didn't hear you.
My statement was, due to the low percentage of recovery for the business owners renewing their licenses. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't talk, so I would just say on my mouth. Um, I would need to put that back on the table.
Please start over again. Can't hear you. Please start over again.
My statement was, to the mayor and the council, that we also, for our work session, put back on the table the collection notices to the business owners that are past due on their
Can you hear me?
Yes.
These are items that are going to be placed on for the March 9th work session. First of all, is the vacant lot ordinance, the finalization of the vacant lot ordinance. The next one is the workplace COVID-19 policy. The next one is the Zoom logistics. And the next one is the review of collection notices. Yes. That one is the decorum. It doesn't have that name, but it's, it's council decorum. Okay, so that gives us, I think it gives us five or... Oh, God, we don't have a lot of them. Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, so that gives us six items. That's gonna fill, that's gonna fill us up. Did they hear you? Okay. The last item was item number six, the C-step application request that came from the county, and that's to be reviewed also, so that's added to the March 9th work session agenda. So if we handle these, we're gonna be filled up. We're gonna be, because, you know, you can't have maybe 10 items on a, trying to get a thing done. Yeah, okay, okay, all right, okay. Because always, see, it's another one you get additional items because things happen. So, okay. All right, I'm going to continue on down, and the next item was Councilmember Hargrove, the someone that you put on executive session.
The executive session should have been five, so that when we got finished, we would go into that. But I'm gonna move down to women's council photos. What I'm gonna do is get in contact with the two former council members, Councilmember Marino and Downing. And we need to set, and I would like to set a meeting between next week and the week after, for us to come together and see what our theme would be and what we're gonna be wearing.
Okay, have you got the information from the treasurer?
She's, I'm waiting on her, that's why, in the meantime, I'd like to get these things settled, so once she finds, or we all agree on, the photographer will have everything So I'd like to meet, like I said, either next week, starting the 22nd, or the following week, which is the 1st of March. I would like to have this done at least by the second week of March, which ends Friday, the 12th. So if we can get everything done by that time and have the pictures taken and have everything back within the month of March, which is Women's History Month.
Okay, any other comments on that? Yes. The pictures, the... Yeah. Now, I think we had originally said that once we get the photographer and they come out for a sitting, we can have them to get all the other pictures at the same time. I think that's the best way, because if you're gonna have somebody, they probably charge you a fee, a sitting fee, just to come. we can have them to get all the other pictures at the same time. I think that's the best way, because if you're gonna have somebody, they probably charge you a fee, a sitting fee, just to come, come out. Is that the pleasure?
Madam Mayor, um, I don't want, because um Councilmember Waiters is talking about all the former mayors. I don't want trying to locate all the mayors to hold up for the women's councils. I think that should be separate or have locate all the mayors. Um, but I don't want that to be a holdup.
Well, basically.
The women's setting, I mentioned nothing about that. I mentioned.
I didn't.
I'm sorry. Different things I am entertained what you're saying. I'm not saying the woman getting in the building without a discussion because it was part of our discussion.
Uh huh.
I'm just doing my usual part of the discussion. She's talking about one thing, I'm talking about the other, the other, they send a concrete similar setting.
Well, here, here's, here's my thing. And I'm just talking about it personally, because I think it would be a good idea, because we only have, basically, two other people that have to come. Well, it's gonna be three altogether. If we, since you have to round up those other people, we get all three of them and let them come on, let them take the pictures, because they charge a sitting fee.
It was just two other council members.
No, I'm talking about, you got Cook and Matt, and that's it, and okay. Yeah, you have to put in a picture of him, so I had to do all of that at one time. I mean, because you got a person running back and forth, and if you do it this way, you, he takes all the pictures, they let you look through to choose what you want, and then frame them up and keep on pushing. It's, it's a sitting, they're gonna charge you when they come out here. Yes, uh Councilmember.
Uh, I think uh what should be done, Councilwoman Hargrove should coordinate for the council. Councilwoman Waiters should coordinate for.
Thank you, that's, that's exactly what I was saying. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
It's fine, we just need to get one day. No, no.
That trying to get everybody together to have the pictures taken. But again, we're talking about coordination. Your desire is for the mayors. Her desire is for the council. You coordinate that side, you coordinate on that side. And if we can manage to have the same photographer take the pictures, good.
Why not? Why not?
Saying if it can be managed that way, fine.
Right.
But she, she does her, the council part, she does the mayor part.
And.
Okay. Okay, all right, um, we're I think that covers, that was all your agenda items, Councilmember. Okay, we're going to move on down, and I'm gonna go into the mayor's update, and I wanted to say this for the benefit of all the residents that are on the line. Please be considerate, and that's what everybody gives a report, be considerate of everyone time. Please take your two minutes and, you know, summarize what you need. If you have other needs, please put them in the form of an email, send them here to the town office. But we're going to begin the reports, and I'm going to begin with mine. I have some information that I received concerning a project that delegate Eric Barron had proposed to myself and the council, and it's the public art opportunity. They're down to the process now where they're getting people to bid on the designs, and I wanted everyone to know that. There, there are a lot of different towns involving the cities and towns. You have Bowie, C Pleasant, District Heights, Capitol Heights, Fairmont Heights, and Glen Arden. We've already expressed to them the desires for our theme, and the theme always goes back to historic. I, I think it was one of our meetings a few, a few months ago, we said we wanted to be historic now. She contacted me again, and she said, well, what were your colors? So I said, well, our colors were the navy and the gold color. Those two colors were the town colors on the original documents. Okay, so now, what they're working on now is how they're gonna bring that theme to us and make it something really interesting just for the town of Fairmont Heights. And, and at, in the footnote, it says the shelter should be designed based on the history of the town. This is inclusive of Mayor Daweswell Brooks, the service to the town, and one of the town's historic colors, and the use of the town's historic colors of native blue and canary yellow. So expect to see more information coming out on that. That's on its way, that bus shelter, they're now taking the bids for it. And they have all the specs for what they're using for the bid. So like I said, the update lets it go along. Uh, out front, we now have up and running our temperature checks, we have the login paperwork out front. We have the, the thermometers. So what we've been doing is using our wrist to take our temperature, and it works well. So you just do it on your wrist, you can do it, everyone can do their own temperature. You log it in, put the time you came in and everything, and do it as everybody comes to do it, works out well. So that's a, a good thing we have as a safety precaution. I don't know whether I mentioned it, I think I mentioned in the work session, was the information that came from WSSC. We're in the process of making a flyer, because WSSC is talking about the plan that they have for replacing aging pipes here and in C Pleasant, I think it's gonna be in Capitol Heights too. But there is a notice that'll be going out to everyone in the community. It's supposed to, it was supposed to have started January twenty sixth, I think it was, but if it hasn't started, it's soon to start. If you see anybody out working with WSSC truck, you know they're in the process of replacing aging pipes. And we know that's a process that's been going on for a while now, but it's coming to our community. We also have uh the report from Senator Benson, and I want to read just the first few paragraphs of what she wrote. She says, dear wonderful friends and supporters, here we are at the beginning of a new year of twenty twenty one. Needless to say, a lot has happened since we last saw each other or communicated. For example, I never thought I would live to see such an assault on our democracy. But here is the good news, God is still in charge. He sits high, looks slow, reaches down, and lifts up. He sees it, he will fix it, be not dismayed. After that, I'm gonna skip down and talk about some of the concerns and legislative issues that she is working on. Number one, it's health coverage as a result of COVID nineteen, housing, food desert, controlled drug prices, educational blueprint override for property tax incentive, elder abuse registry, broadband access, clean energy, police reform, economic development, unemployment, litter control, herbal lime, the highways, Sutherland High School, and Fairwood Elementary construction. And she said, these are just a few of the priorities that they hope to accomplish this session. She gave her number, and she also gave an email address. So that came from her office. I wanted everyone to hear what she said. I'm happy to report that Officer Goodman did receive his Medal of Honor. A lot of people probably were looking on as he received that right down in Congress on, I forget what day he received that, but it was so very wonderful that he received that Congressional Medal Medal of Honor. Uh, the last thing I want to talk about is the Women's History Month. Now, I'm planning a Women's History Month for March twenty first of this year. It will be from three o'clock until four thirty P M., and it's gonna be virtual. It's gonna include a lot of our people who have worked for the town, or a lot of the females who have, who have actually known us or knew about the history of our town, because everything now goes back to our historic roots. So we hope to invite those people out and have them, to have just a good conversation with us, and have a, just a wonderful time marking Women's History here in the town. And it's a lot different, we won't have the food this time, but everyone, you could sort of prepare this and have it along with your dinner or at your own home. So I wanted you all to know that would be on the agenda. March twenty first, and it will be from three o'clock until four thirty. Okay, all right, thank you very much. I'm gonna continue on down to the council updates, and I'm gonna start here with Councilmember Hargrove.
I'm Madam Mayor, I'm gonna um, I'll go on the court and ask the clerk to the council to read it. To read into the uh minutes. My uh response. Um, I'm gonna ask her to read that into the uh minutes and make it part of her, uh, the official report.
You're muted.
If, if that's my report, that's my report.
Well, okay, and I understand that, but basically, your report, well, your report with Mama.
That's my report, and I'm asking the clerk to the council to read my response.
We, we did not hear any of her report.
I'm asking you to read it into the, into the record.
I'm going to do some, I'm going to go. I'm only giving myself.
Can I?
Now, this is the court to the council, I have declined reading this in the record.
Uh, she can't do that, okay.
Can I?
Okay. Actually.
Madam Mayor.
Uh huh. Yeah.
The man who stated the council member Hargrove acts as a clerk to the council.
Uh huh.
She received.
Okay.
She is now asked Councilmember Up to read the report into public record. Y'all, we're into public record. But it appears that this particular one has some relevance and some urgency, and I don't have a copy of it. I don't know what's getting ready to be sent to be sent to public record, and I asked for a copy, I just have. I have the vibe towards uh copies of this one. And we don't have, I don't know, and I presented a copy or make copy, I don't understand this one. I have now, I'm asking for a copy on this, and I'm really, really pleased to have a copy of the report. I'm given, I hope you know who this is now.
We can't hear you.
Actually. Yes. Okay.
That already had been read into record, and we haven't had a copy.
And, and.
One of those things were read into the record, but I can't remember what it was.
Now, this is.
Okay, let me, let me just, let me just say this. Basically, I have given my report. I'm gonna down the list because I'm asking every kind of report. Now, if you don't have a report, you could just say, I don't have a report. But it's causing a lot of undue issue.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I have the floor still, you responded to something I said.
Yeah.
There's numerous times that items have been read into record with other councilmembers have not. Now, again, the issue is you want a copy. But right now, I'm sorry, I'm talking to the council, you received. So I'm.
We can't hear you.
Like I said, she can get a copy, but right now it's been read into, and it's been many times, you can't keep uh on your time. You do what you want, but then when something else comes up, you try to deny that person the same rights and privileges. Exactly, my, what I'm saying. That is, Madam Mayor, just as you said, there's been times that you've read items into the record. So, my point exactly, my point exactly.
Okay, now see, we, I don't have any kind of, I don't have. Yeah.
I'm gonna ask um Councilwoman Hargrove to me for a moment. And um, and um, can, can, can it send the camera?
Okay, okay.
Let me unmute, ma'am. It's on my. Okay. No, no, my, 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 yes, good, I got my Councilmember. Okay, all right, Councilmember, I think it's on you now.
Okay, I don't have a report per se. Um, other than uh going back to let the mayor and council know that the information that was requested for the police department, I have obtained that, as well as the information that the mayor provided me with, that uh will be presented to the mayor and council on the twenty fifth, so that we can go forward with uh the police department. And with that being said, I myself decided uh some months ago, when I was advised by one of my constituents, that there is a petition being circulated in reference to the quorum, AKA Gang of Four. So what I'm asking today, Mayor Martin, that uh we get the information to whom the chair is of the Ethics Commission, so that we can all submit our responses to the allegations that were made against us.
Okay. Um, as you know, the Ethics Commission was just going in a couple of months ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, I'm gonna need to talk with them first to find out who they selected as their chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I can do that. If you would please just give me, you can just email it to me.
No, ma'am, this is uh uh allegations that were made against four council members. Uh, respectfully, I say it has nothing to do with you or anyone, any other council member, but myself, Councilwoman Hargrove, Councilmember Morris, and Councilwoman Morgan. And we have decided to answer the allegations. And again, we would like to submit it to the Ethics Commission for their review.
Okay.
And we are doing, and we are, right, I just need the contact to whomever the chair is, so that we can submit it. And um what we're doing is with legal advice that we sought.
Okay. Okay, do you want back to me?
I yield back to town, Councilwoman Hargrove.
Yeah, thank you.
Advocations, so Hardgrove Communication, Correct Information Public Relations Committee. Uh, committee informs citizens about their town government and the programs you, and programming uh using various forms of communications, including newsletters, news releases. uh using various forms of communications, including newsletters, news releases, flyers, informational brochures, town publications, the website, social media outlets, municipal cable TV, outside advertisement to make um to market the town's facilities and and events. Uh projects and responsibilities, all of these were completed in my first year. Community branding, new logo, use for the town's vehicles, printed materials, et cetera. Um entrance signs, flags without the town's um flags with the town logo. Welcoming package to the community members established the cable TV station. The town runs the cable TV station using the PEG grant from various um from Verizon and Comcast according uh and coordinating the website contents to continue to update of the website. Accusation is number one, violating the Open Meetings Act. If the Open Meetings Act is being violated, that does not fall strictly on one um on the shoulders of one person. Correct information and Open Meetings Act violation caused um on the shoulders of the full mayor and council request, this is a request that I'm making. Safe dates of the full mayor and council uh validate the Open Meetings Act. Accusation, precarious technical support uh that produces conference calls and video call meetings that residents cannot hear, see, or do not know or do not work at all. Contact and correct information. The onus is not on the equipment, the onus is on the operator. The person who operates the conference calls, what is Zoom meetings, is the clerk to the council. The operator of the website is uh the town manager. Correct information. I recommend that the council, mayor and council have Mr. Gray run the Zoom um for the work session and the town meetings. Uh recommendations was challenged over um however, Mr. Gray has been used for other Zoom meeting um when it's convenient for a few. Mayor Martin asked uh the full council to be on site for conference calls. Um so the citizens can hear. Not all council members have done this ask. Accusation number three. She's amended the support by the three of the uh four uh receiving, I don't understand, um received from the town three hundred, I'm sorry, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars contrary to the charter. Correct information. The three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars reimbursement for expenses occurred for the town planning the eighty-fifth anniversary, the full council except for the mayor. I'm sorry, the full council except for me. Um mayor, council voted on the reimbursement. Those voting include council member Waiters, Morris, Morgan, with Dawson, council member up in New York, and the mayor. Note, I did not participate in the vote to reimburse, just as I did not participate in the vote to postpone or cancel the eighty-fifth anniversary. Note, um this is not the first time that reimbursement was paid to the council. On October thirteenth, two thousand and ten, check number four uh four two one five was paid to council member Waiters in the amount of one thousand five hundred four dollars and seventy-two cents. Note, due to the allegations surrounding the reimbursement, the full council met with the attorney, uh Deloche, in closed sessions. Uh details of that meeting cannot be disclosed. However, the full council was advised that I was due for reimbursement. Note, the eighty-fifth anniversary can found in the following minutes. July ninth, work session um minutes and approved in the September eighteenth uh two thousand nineteen town hall meeting. December twenty uh sorry, December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, February eleventh. Um consensus of the items for the full council for the eighty-fifth anniversary and the full council agreed. February nineteenth, twenty twenty, town hall, old business, eighty-fifth anniversary updates. All state, all states, the dates have gone out um to municipalities and.
Community fundraiser events are coming up.
Coming up, March twenty first, twenty twenty.
At six thirty.
Talk to the community about having historical talks with the residents at the library next week, March um. Six at six thirty, Facebook pages.
Is connected um to the to the right purchase, um that was, I think, to purchase tickets. March tenth, twenty twenty work session, Ms. Wa- Ms. Walker said in her report that she received questions about the eighty-fifth anniversary. Um you bought, you 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 budgeted for this item and the full council has to own it. Note, while our research and payment allegations, I did find the council member with Dawson is receiving three fifty in her stipends where she should only be receiving one fifty with a total amount owed to the council, I'm sorry, to the town of Vermont Heights, forty-two, let me do this a different way, four thousand two hundred dollars as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Accusations at this um commission. Correct information, on February twenty twenty work session, council member Waiters objected to the first ethics board that the mayor presented to the council. The following people were recommended by the mayor, Ms. Joyce White, Ms. Marjorie Shelton, and the third person was not present. Waiters asked if anything had been put out to the community regarding the Ethics Commission. The ma- Mayor Martin responded that she would um that she would put a notice out to the community. The issue was table for um that event, for that evening. Uh when Mayor Martin came back to the council, the people she recommended were no longer wanting to serve. Accusation, waste of tax, waste of taxpayer dollars. Correction, the town of Vermont Heights has spent less on fleet maintenance since I've been in office. FY twenty fourteen, uh nine thousand three hundred and four forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. FY fifteen, seventeen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy cents. FY sixteen, nineteen thousand five hundred thirty dollars and sixteen cents. FY seventeen, nineteen thousand six hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred and five dollars and forty-six cents. FY eighteen, twenty-two thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and ten cents. Uh so for my first term would be FY nineteen, thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents for FY twenty, thirteen thousand four hundred three dollars and ninety-three cents. So since I've been in office, less dollars towards the town uh town's fleet maintenance. Accusation, collectively, the four failed to manage the town. Uh correct information. Management of the town staff, public works, chief of police, police department, personnel, and the absence of the chief are the responsibility of the town manager. Accusation, uh uh wrongfully fired public work supervisor. The correct information, this is a legal matter, therefore it cannot be discussed. However, I will inform you um that that as the other information you have received um has been or the other information that you have been fed is incomplete, inaccurate, and have been manipulated. The information given to you. Accusation ten, effective communication system. Correct information, as stated above, the town of Vermont Heights uses the PEG funding. As, no, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I have the floor. I have the floor. Madam Mayor, I have the floor. I have the, I'm almost finished. I'm almost finished. As as effective communication, correct information, as stated above, the town of Vermont Heights uses the funds of the PEG grant um on the cable TV for those, for the funds, not taxpayers' dollars. Neither does the PBS station, the YouTube station, fun, fun taxed by the tax there dollars. Amount of Vermont Heights, the PBS station is funded through the PEG grant, YouTube is free. Facebook um operation is counteracted by.
Councilmember, councilmember, stop. Councilmember, councilmember. Okay. I have the floor. No, but I know you had the receipt. Okay. I do, but no, but you.
This is embarrassing. This is embarrassing.
It's her.
It is legal. She mentioned the time. She mentioned.
Okay. Councilmember, councilmember. Okay. All in favor?
I'm not here.
Yo, okay, how many people in favor? We. Hey, look, look, look. Okay, okay, look, 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 yo. Okay, okay. Yes, you have the right to see what's being read. Legally, you do. You do. Okay, councilmember. That's it. That's the end of that. Okay, don't read anymore. Councilmember, don't read anymore. You mentioned her name and it could create legal implications.
I'm not here.
None. Exactly. Every name was mentioned. That's a lawsuit right there.
You cannot read her name. You have to read over her name if you're reading it.
I will.
Yeah, you cannot, you cannot include her name. You cannot include her name. Okay, okay, yeah. Okay, so that's gonna have to be. She has to, she has to give you a copy. She has to give you a copy. Okay. Okay, so I think what we're gonna do and we're gonna have. You are you almost.
Finished, but Madam Mayor.
Because you can't mention anybody else's name in it. You can't mention anybody. No, but but here's what, here's what I want, really. That everybody, anytime somebody's name is mentioned, it takes it to another level. So we cannot do that. So if you almost finished that, you can finish that. Let that begin your report. We're gonna move on. Because this is just two, two and yes, thank for.
As stated, the town, the town of Vermont Heights PEG grant is funded through the cable TV station. The funds do not, I'm sorry, the funds are not taxpayer dollars. Um neither, the PBS station or the YouTube station is funded by taxpayer dollars from the town of Vermont Heights. The PBS station is funded through the PEG grant. The YouTube is free. Um the website is managed by the town manager. Facebook is operated by another council member. Um the town is uh does have a Zoom conference call, but the operator um both the operator, both operated by the town clerk to the council. The clerk to the council is um responsible for minutes, foyer, and any other. Uh I am requested for information. Accusation. Potentially, the mayor purchasing the new trash vehicle. Misappropriation of dollars. Correct information. First of all, the accusation that indicate, that you indicated is wrong. The mayor did not follow the procedures um in the charter to purchase the dump truck. That is why I voted against the purchase of the dump truck. The town manager, I'm sorry, the town attorney met with the council during closed session to advise on how to proceed and how to handle that um situation. The um the correct purchase uh was fought, the correct procedure was followed for the purchase of the trash truck which was purchased um this, it was purchased second. Note, the town has been asking for a trash truck for over twenty years. The mayor and council have successfully fulfilled that request. Trying to hold me um, trying to hold me single-handedly responsible for something that the prior uh council has been unable to accomplish. This is ridiculous. I'm finished. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Give me that contact. Letting you know that it is uh something between us and the uh Civic Association. Because I was just going by the flyer that I received that indicated exposure of the quorum, AKA Gang of Four. I was trying to that and to the petition that was circulated, but it didn't say who it was from.
Right, okay. Well, we don't understand the councilman Waiters that it came from.
It didn't, I didn't say it. I didn't, I didn't say it came from the, I would be saying it's something between the four and the Civic Association.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on.
I just like.
I'm I'm gonna get that contact because I have the list. I think when I spoke to the council, I gave it to her earlier. I'm just saying, I'm like, you still have there, we have the email addresses and everything. But I I can get it probably, you can get it tomorrow, right? Because we have it all, we have it just to to notify them about the meeting. And so it's in the back, so. Yeah, okay, uh councilmember.
Um I.
Well, she doesn't have the floor.
Yeah. He he was asking. Okay.
Okay.
It had.
I was informed by one of my constituents that there is a petition being circulated in reference to myself, councilwoman, councilwoman, and councilwoman Morris. Now, sometimes I'm badly awkward. We we receive the flyer. I've seen this.
Oh, okay, go on, councilmember. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, in all due respect, in all due respect, my actual point of order, who was written into public record. Councilmember Hargrove read her responsibilities for her committee. Make that clear. Whatever the Civic Association has brought against whomever is not a report. It's a discussion. If it's concerning the mayor and council, we should have had that discussion in work session. But we didn't. So now we're in a town meeting and it's a pony shop. When she mentioned my name, when she mentioned my name, wait, wait, let me finish. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, when she mentioned my name, for clarity, when, okay, when she mentioned my, because because my name was mentioned, I'm going to respond. I'm not going into this. I'm going to respond. For every time that my name was mentioned, I will defend it. I don't know anything about of the four or whatever. But that was this was, I don't think this was a time where we're giving reports for this to come up. Point number one. Point number two, if my name is in there, like I said in the very beginning, I should have had a copy of what she read into public record. Now, to her, for her to say that I read things, I read something definitively for work session justification. But I want to say this. I want to say this. When I wasn't on the council, before I came, became a councilperson, I came because of wanting to be involved. And every time I wasn't on the council, I got called to be involved, and I've always showed up to help wherever needed. Zoom, I gave my personal, lots of conversations during COVID. I gave my personal Zoom number so that we can continue on with meetings. When the council could not go into executive session, I spent two hours prior to a meeting to get certified and everybody ran. And I'm saying, I do everything I can to help to get to the meeting.
Appreciate it.
No, ma'am, let me finish. No, 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 she put, and I'm gonna give, I'm a court, but I'm gonna give me court. But I want to say to this Madam Mayor, because she's, I'm going to, she read my, she read my name several times.
Yeah.
And I'm going to defend that. They mentioned the law. I hope, I hope that they didn't take this to our attorney. Here's the reason why. There's a process for recall in the charter. It has not gotten to the ethics board. It hasn't even gotten to the election board, whatever it is. But mine, we're going to remind you of the process that was taken when they tried to recall you. And the same council member up called a special meeting because she says someone from the community asked her about the process. Wherein I explained to her what the charter says, we have nothing to do with it. Where, and I explained to her what the charter says, we have nothing to do with it. If the sentence was to complain and they want petition, it's nothing for us to do until they, I think it's just get their signatures. So it's really nothing for us to do. Define yourself when it needs to be. But I'm gonna say this also, these text messages are public record. Those emails are public record.
Okay.
I have emails from when I wasn't on the council. I have text messages from when I wasn't on the council, from when I was. I can defend myself. Now, I'm gonna go into my report, I'm going into my report, I'm going, I'm going into my report. Community services, I'm going to transition that over, as I said in the work session. Councilmember Will Dossin will elaborate on that. But we delivered hot meals, we delivered Thanksgiving baskets, and some other additional meals we delivered. I have spoken to Prince George's County Arts Council for an art show in April. I'm also speaking to individuals about bicycle rodeo, trying to get sponsorship. Day before yesterday, I received over 50 grant opportunities, a list of grant opportunities for programming in the community. It's directed towards nonprofits. I don't think we qualify, but I intend to make certain that if we do qualify, we do look into it. I won't remention the Net Zero Homes, but I did provide a copy of that to the council. I did provide a copy of that to the Civic Association members that are in the impact area on that street. Two things came out of that meeting that the, uh, mayor and council should be concerned with, and that was parking both in both directions, remain that way. And since we're doing the parking study, um, that should be included, but those were the only things for the concern that came out of that meeting for the mayor and council. Everything else, all questions, the hip representatives will follow back up then. Um, I presented to council with a copy of the economic development report. I put maps in there, this report is interactive, but because it's hard copy, you can go to those links and it will drill down into the additional information that's there. There is one additional map that some way I have to share with the council because Enterprise Zone in the area for economic development, where it was limited before, we're now included. And it includes Addison Road, Sheriff Road, a large area going down towards the stadium that you need to be aware of. So you have our economic development report before you with the links. Um, there is an attendance who was there, Mrs. Sacks, as she wasn't there, but Mrs. Sacks was in our first initial meeting. I'll provide a copy of that. Um, I mentioned to you all District 27, Jack and Steel, no call, was selected as the Prince George's County Democratic Representative for Delegacy, but I don't wanna go into that so much as to say, not long, as I mentioned, the importance of the council for the redistricting assignment of the redistricting individuals. I got a phone call concerning the school and the impact of that development that's going across the street and who we can talk to, and the reason why they're reaching out to us is because our students are going to go to that school or will be impacted by any divide or new school. Um, and they are in the midst of meeting identifying funding, um, right now. Uh, meals and gift cards, I'm not going into that. Black History Month, um, the Black History Month event kinda sort of grew and expanded on just basically reaching out to people. I mentioned to the mayor that we could have talked about a lot of other people, Paul Lawrence Dunbar, but just reached into our own community and pulled up our history, which is very, very rich. I won't go into that, but I wanna bring this in this, in my report. Mayor and council introduced a resolution for African American History Month, and it's very well worth it. An observation that would begin this month. And some of us came together, you got students who's here, who's here, who's here twice, last month, before twice. I've given a copy a couple of times, I've read it, it's on the website, it's everywhere. And yet, the individuals that introduced the resolution have not attended, not one, not one. Not even one week, week, not a half century, not one. Not one after saying they didn't know what was going on. I have read it into the report several times, and they still have not participated. That could be one of the reasons.
I'm going so long, I'm gonna go all the way around first. Uh, councilmember Wood, I'm.
Good evening, can everyone hear me? Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm calling, I'm, I'm reporting for, uh, the month of February as well as projects that have already gone forth that I'm sure the community knows in regard to, uh, food distribution. I'm working on trying to find a way to have consistent, uh, food or some source of, uh, the grabbing goes or something to help replenish the food desert in the community. I, um, attended the Zoom meeting as well as, uh, last Friday was a part of the Black History, uh, program, and hopefully many of you all got on, it was very informative to know that this is such a still rich community and collaboratively doing things as a unit. Uh, Fred Smith from Furman Heights High School, as well as, we went as far as acknowledging Ms., uh, Graves turning 100 years old in April, which will receive the key to the city. I'm also gonna give some information that should go out with, uh, COVID-19. Angela Alsobrooks had a meeting on Saturday, and it was said that as many people that want the vaccine, you can dial 311 and pre-register from seven in the morning to seven in the evening. I know I got in, they'll, um, correspond with you, uh, via email or a telephone call. Uh, they are also encouraging that you call PG Hospital, Doctor's Hospital, John Walgreen. Get in as many places as you can, because the list had gotten kinda discombobulated because people that were to go back for their second shot, feeling that they were helping friends, gave the number out, and the friends took the second shot, so it's making people be delayed. So if you get on now and you are called, you will get both dates. The date you will get your initial shot and your second shot, once they register you in. So, uh, the places will be, uh, some of the places are located at Chevrolet, uh, Health Department, which is adjacent to PG, Doctor's Hospital, Six Flags and Sports Learning. Those are the, uh, main centers, they have one on, up on McCormick Drive somewhere as well. But they said, don't just hesitate one place, register everywhere, and then be bumped off. I'll be attending Senator Benson's meeting on the 22nd of this month, which will be here for the council. But the vaccines are very important, um, and they're, they're speaking, uh, the county exec is really boosting it up to encourage everyone with what the strands and the variances are. They're encouraging you to protect yourself and get on the list if you can now. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, uh, councilmember Moore.
Good evening. I know I was supposed to provide the mayor and the council with the, um, bulk pickup. I will have that to you all by Friday morning, I'll send it to the accountant as well for her to review. I had some emergent, family emergencies this week with my daughter. Um, so I will send that in and, um, for you all to review and respond. And if any changes need to be made, I can do it right away. Um, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, alright, uh, councilmember Ward.
Good afternoon, citizens. Again, in Mr. Rumi's report, I'd like to commend the public works staff for being on time with the snow removal um, from the town. Um, again, Mr. Rumi said that they were on time. They came out in different, different times of the night. You could hear the, uh, plow going down your street. So, um, I think it was a few complaints about putting too much salt down. But I'd rather have too much than not enough. So, um, they still are out here doing their due diligence to make sure everyone's safe in our town. Um, mayor, if the calendar can go out to the citizens for the legal holidays that we have, that way the citizens will know which Fridays that we pick up, we won't pick up all, so we won't have to necessarily send them a letter. So maybe if the flyers went to all the citizens, and at least they will also know what days our staff here in the building are also off. So I think that's a good note for it to either go on the station and the, um, right. That's correct. And the website. Yes. So, um, Ms. Tucker has a copy of them also. Um, I had gone to a media and I just wanted to read something because we all never know either when somebody passes away, um, or state of an emergency, or on things to do. So it says, in case of emergency, I just wanna read something. Do you have a plan? And the points are to, um, I'm gonna read, uh, what do natural disasters, severe weather, and COVID-19 have in common? They often have, they often happen when we aren't expecting them. It's important that everyone have a plan for all the emergencies in life. Natural disasters, disease outbreaks, and emergencies can have widespread and even long-lasting impacts on supplies, services, and the public health and healthcare systems. Don't wait for an emergency to happen to prepare. Use the time before and between events to gather essential supplies. Learn self-help skills and build the self-confidence you need to respond quickly and constructively in a crisis. When services and supplies are limited, it is important to have the personal needs, prescriptions, paperwork, power sources, and practical skills you need to respond. Our partners for, um, okay, and so below are some simple things that you can do to start preparing for emergencies. Remember to review your plan every six months and make any dates, any updates. Gather enough food, water, and medical supplies for each person for three days. An emergency water supply. An emergency food supply, including specialty foods such as nutrition drinks and ready-to-feed formula for infants. People with dietary restrictions, food allergies and sensitivities, and medical conditions such as diabetes. Prescriptions and medications, prescription and home use medical devices, medical supplies, first-day supplies, infant and childcare supplies. Find phone numbers for your physician, pediatrician, pharmacist, counselor.
Councilmember, give your report.
And veterinarian. Collect and protect important paperwork. Ask the friend or relative who lives outside of the immediate area, preferably in another state, to be your family's out, out-of-town contact. Identify a shelter-in-place location inside your home. A sick room that can be used to separate sick household members from those who are healthy to emergency meeting places outside your home where your family can reunite in an emergency. And at least two ways out of every room in your home. Locate boarding facilities or animal hospitals where you can lodge your pets in an evacuation. Contact a local animal shelter, animal control, or a relief organization if you need help or have questions. Mayor, that ends my report. And I just wanted to say that I have relatives that live in San Antonio, Texas. So, um, because my cousin lived here all his life, he's the actual president of the block because nobody up there in Texas knew that, knew anything about snow this deep.
Yeah.
And snow period that they never got. So he's like the king of the street. They're asking him 50 million questions. He said, why are you all throwing out sand? So that he told, you better get some ice melt put down for that snow. So, um, also there, uh, with their own electricity, they're allowing them like five hours. So what they're doing is, until they get this straight, or this snow up, they doing maybe like five hours during the day or five hours at night, so they giving them a option each day.
Okay.
So, that's, it is.
It's tragic, my brother lives in Midlothian, near Dallas.
In Dallas, that is Dallas.
He said he still has his power, but, uh, you know, so many other people don't. They don't have anything, so it's really.
They don't, they have two small kids.
And COVID has swept through.
Yes.
His whole house.
Ooh.
And everybody's coming along good, except for my sister-in-law, she's just beginning to man, but it's devastating. It's really devastating.
So mayor, I'll have this to put on the station, so people could read, and if Mr. Rumi wants to put it on the, uh, website.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, citizens.
We're going to, um, we're going to vote on. See, going down to public participation. At this time, if there are any members of the community that would like to have a comment for the good of the organization, please do so at this time, and please, you can find your comments to two minutes. No, I'm not muted.
Mayor, this is Kim Glenn, may I speak, please?
Okay, alright, if, if you all would please either raise your hands or put your hand in the chat, and we will get to you. Okay? Uh. Is she? Okay, Ms. Gladden?
Yes.
Yes. Would you talk directly into your mic so we can hear you?
Yes, can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Right here, Madam Mayor. Right here.
Right, right here. Right there, louder. Wait a minute. I made it. See how it went? Yeah, okay.
Can you hear me right here?
Yes.
Okay, my question or my comment, um, is regarding the, uh, Public Works and I- And I guess I can direct this to you and also to Councilmember Morgan. But what is the protocol or the process for Public Works cleaning the field that spans the length of 61st Avenue? Currently, there is trash scattered all throughout the field. It's been there for several days. Last week, there was a mattress dumped at the corner of Sheriff Road and 61st Avenue. It was there for two and a half days. As I mentioned last week at the work session when we were talking about the bulk trash pickup, oftentimes, people, I don't want to say citizens because I will hope that our citizens are not dumping, but oftentimes, people will dump items in this field, and it always stays for several days. There have been large TVs dumped in this field, you know, last year, staying for a week at a time. People would dump trash bags, big black trash bags in the field, staying for several days at a time. So I just want to know, as many of us have been, I've been home teleworking for the past year. And as I come out of my home, 61st Avenue is the main thoroughfare from Sheriff Road into our town. So it's not a good look for the town. And no one wants to come out of their home as taxpayer residents and see trash in the field. And it's staying there for several days, sometimes weeks at a time. I had to email the town last week in order to get that mattress moved. Someone came and moved it. So to my original question, what is the protocol for Public Works cleaning up this field or coming regularly to check on the status of the field?
Okay. Let me just, just make a few comments about that, Ms. Gladden. Now, normally what they do, they ride the town and they access the things that are left because people are dumping so much here from Sheriff Road all through 56th Place, Colb Street. We have so many areas, well, Aspen Place. Every, yeah, every street just about has a lot of areas where they're dumping. And down on the ravine, we realize that's an area too because wherever they see open space, they come through at night and they dump. Now, for the last few weeks, they've been sort of overwhelmed because we've been having either snow, ice, or whatever. And we have three Public Works employees. Basically, what they've been doing is just riding around to see for the areas that need immediate attention, and they go and try to take care of those. But we've had a lot of trouble trying to keep out of all this ice and snow. Normally, if you send in a request, even if you just send an email, it goes directly to Ms. Tucker. She gets off of the computer. She goes directly to Mac. He goes to check the area out. And normally, within the next day, he'll get it done. Now, you know, it has always been... Cleaned up, they dump again. They... It's just a vicious cycle. So you know, if you have any areas of concern, if you see anything, say something. Just report it, and we'll get them to it as soon as the weather is convenient for them doing it. Like I said, right now, they've been getting up all the time, the nights. They've been coming out. They've been making sure the streets are well-clean, well, you know, so that you don't have all the ice out there. Because not only that, we have so many icy areas. We have 59th. We have 62nd. We have 61st. We got water running all over the place, even right here at 6th Avenue. It comes up from Addison Road. It's just running, and it's making things very dangerous. They're trying to keep it safe also. So if you see areas that need, need attention, please just continue to send that information along because we'll make sure it's done. Because as long as Mac is here directing that, he makes sure that that happens.
If someone else is speaking, we can't hear them.
Oh, you might be muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Sorry about that, Ms. Gladden. I had Mac to get that mattress the next day after work session. Also, if you do see, because we do have a lot of illegal dumping, and ain't nobody gonna put their address on nothing for us to cite them. So also, you can give me a call. My number is 301-537-0041. And I will make sure that any area that is dumped illegally will get it removed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else on the line that would like to make a comment?
Yes, this is Joyce White. I have my hand up. Hi, Mayor.
White, yeah.
Yes. I have two comments to make. The first comment I have to make is about the Zoom. Wouldn't it be better if you guys did it from your own homes or your own...
I can't hear you, Ms. White.
Wouldn't it be better if you guys heard it, did the Zoom from your own homes or own personal space where we could see you and hear you? Did you hear me?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And the second thing that I had, do you really think that we should be taking pictures during this time of COVID? Shouldn't we wait until COVID is over or most people get vaccinated?
Okay.
And the third thing I have, I wanted to address Ms. Up about accusing the Civic Association in an open public town meeting of a flyer being put out that she's accusing the Civic Association. Ms. Up, I have you on warning. It's being recorded, and this is your second time. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had to say.
All right. Thank you. Council, councilmember. Okay. Are there, are there any other comments?
Yes, Sylvia Syphex. I, I don't know how to use the hands up. It worked the last time, but it's not working now. Can I speak?
Yes. Yes, you may, you may continue.
Okay, I, I have several things, but I will correspond in writing. But I, I would like to suggest that the town website also be a place where meetings are announced. Also, on the town website, there's a tab for online payments, but it doesn't work. I, I suggest that that, that upgrade be made so that people can make payments online. Also, the, the town staff is not correctly listed on the website. In fact, I, I need contact information for the treasurer, and there's no contact information for the treasurer. But, but I, but, but I'd like to say in the past, the town would come around to businesses and collect the, the, the business license. I know that my tenants who were, who were mentioned in the meeting have tried, like I have, on a whole lot of occasions to reach the town, and there's no answer. So I, I, I'm, I'm really gonna hope, and we'll put it in writing, that the town will reconsider these excessive fines during a pandemic. The, the state of Maryland and Prince George's County, they, they waived fees during this pandemic because of the difficulty in citizens communicating and because the, the buildings are closed. So these businesses have really been struggling, and I really suggest that, that maybe somebody just come around and we make arrangements, and they'll just, they'll just get straight on the business taxes because they definitely have tried to make payments, and they just have, 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 have not had any luck. And also with the vacant lots, there was supposed to have been a hearing last March, and it was canceled because of the COVID. So I hope that the town might consider just, just not doing non-emergency legislative actions while this pandemic is going on because citizens just can't get out. And if, if it's not an emergency, I just think that we need to take care of our health and, and, and just, just do some, some in-house things, like get the website functional. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, I have my hand up.
Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Barnhart?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me very well?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So one thing that I'd like to go ahead and address was we did talk about historical preservation in a, in a meeting for Thursday we had. I didn't hear anything about that today from Mayor and Council. That was a concern that was brought to that meeting from the Civic Association about the project of the Zero Homes being built on 60th Place and the historical marker, and what was gonna be the decision, whether it had been salvaged, moved, or stayed in place, or whatever the case may be. We wanted to find out if the Mayor and Council had even talked about that yet. Okay. The other thing was, you know, we are moving into a direction in the town where we have development coming in, such as, you know, the Zero Homes, Melvin's Crab House. Then we have the 68 lots that, that the county is looking to do the project on tiny homes. So we know that there's development coming into the town. So being as though we have these type of developments that's going on or you talked about, I, I think if we invest in interest in, in, in the Mayor and Council's work session to, you know, get with, you know, the COVID enforcement, you know, think about how we're gonna address the, these owners of these empty lots and, and these abandoned homes and things like that. Because what we're finding out is that everybody is not being cited. You know, you're citing, you're citing your owners and, and, and the people that's here in the town. This has been talked about in meetings in the past. You have owners that's, you know, currently out of state or overseas. They're not being, you know, cited or giving citations like the people that are here in the town. So, you know, we feel like that should be something that should be addressed so everything could be fair, fair across the board for everybody. Don't, don't just address the people that you can get to. You know, find a way to get to the people that, you know, you can't get to and make it fair across the board. The other thing is, we, we're talking about, you know, community and working together as, as a, as a unit. You know, tonight was a classic example of, you know, this community really is in desperate need of, you know, us being able to come together and be able to start doing things together. I mean, it, it's sad when you have to have a town meeting when you got a lot of, you know, hooting and hollering and fussing. And, and, oh, we all, we all African-Americans. We all in the same community. We all want better for our community. But, you know, for some reason, we got this divide going on. The Civic Association is here for the community and for the people of FEMA Heights. And what we stand for is right as right and was wrong as was wrong. And we, we demand that the people is being served in a way where it's though that they're getting what's due to them and that's what's right. I, I'm not gonna go all into what was said tonight, but like Ms. Joyce, the Vice President of Civic said, you know, this part here has to stop. And if legal action has to be taken into account, that's fine. But I think that we should be able to come to some type of agreement or come to some type of meeting, you know, I mean, as a Civic Association, Mayor and Council, Ethics Committee, and be able to go here and iron these things out as, you know, people that's working in the best interest of this town. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And, yes.
Mr. Barnhart, I truly agree with what you're saying. And I'm also asking if I, if it's possible for us to submit our responses to you and the Civic Association as well as to the Ethics Commission and to come together in a meeting where we can submit our responses to these allegations. And I would just like to make one thing perfectly clear. Ms. White, at no time did you hear me say I was repeating what was said to me. Prior to it being said, I had no idea that the petition came from the Civic Association. But I am willing to sit down and submit my responses to any and all allegations made to the Civic Association President and Vice President as well as to the Ethics Commission.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you to everyone. Did I get all of the, the, the comments from the community? So this is... All of these here? Yeah, because there's so many. I can't get all of them. Yeah. Okay. All right. So we have, we have the information that is on, in the chat box. If any, we'll glance through all of this information, hopefully before the week is out, if we don't get snowed out again. And we'll try to respond as best that we can. I will get that information for the Ethics Commission for you. You can get it in the next few minutes, so that should be fine.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, I, this is a personal question. People who have driveways that need to be shoveled during the snow, is, is there anybody that you recommend for this community?
I don't have any one offhand, but I think what we could probably do, I see the advertisements on Nextdoor, you know, like that Nextdoor, C-Plus and the Nextdoor. They have a lot of people that want to work, and I could probably look on it and give you a referral.
I can do that. You gave me, you gave me Nextdoor. That's information I can add to the rest. I just thought that, like, in some places where there are developments, people sort of have contractors on, online to... And, and then in the summertime, people can sort of like, we can... I think there are things that could be thought about, grass cutting as well as, I mean, for citizens as well as snow, snow plowing. So I'm gonna thank you. I'll just dig in my little stash and see if I can find something to be helpful.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And is there something else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Capers. Ms. Gladden?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry. I have one more question. Councilmember Morris touched on this very briefly, but I wanted to know, has there been any update on the discussion in the work session regarding the bulk trash pickup? I know during that meeting, the work session, Councilmember Dr. Waiters mentioned or, or brought up, you know, what would be the actual fees, you know, for the dumping. So I took it upon myself to go to the Brown Station landfill website. And I just, I guess I'm asking, have the fees that you all discussed, have those been finalized or is that still being worked through? And I won't take up a lot of time, but I just really quickly wanted to share that the, the rates for the Brown Station landfill, they charge $59 per ton to bring bulk items down there. And just for point of reference, a ton is 2,000 pounds. And some of the rates that we, in the minimum, is $20. The minimum deposit is $20, and it's $10 for 320 pounds or less. So it sounds kind of alarming to me with the rates that FEMA Heights was discussing during the work session. For example, charging $50, $75, $100 per item when we could take these items, FEMA Heights can take these items to the land... When we could take these items, Fama Heights can take these items to the landfill for $59 per ton or 2,000 pounds or approximately 10 couches.
Hmm, okay.
There's no way. I mean, I can't imagine.
I didn't get them there. Even before, you have to, yeah, that's the problem. The problem is getting them to the landfill.
Yeah, but I can't imagine that Fama Heights is going to take every dresser or every couch or every chair that they pick up. I can't imagine that Fama Heights is going to take it down there each piece by piece. Because that wouldn't even be economical on your ga, on your gas tank. So I understand that Fama Heights is providing a service, but let's not try to profit off of citizens in, you know, in an extreme way.
Okay, uh, I think, I think what happens is that, that like what Ms. Capers was saying, is that the cost of actually picking it up from in front of your door and transporting it down, that's where the cost comes in. Basically, what we've been trying to do is to make sure that people, if they're planning properly, they have, we have two, actually, you have four days. Because you have two days during the spring, you have two days during the fall, where it's absolutely free. And it would be nice if we could do that, but then people would overwhelm us. And then what happens is that people bring their trash and everything else from their families and they'll take that stuff and sit it right out front there. And so that would be something we couldn't handle. This is a way to keep a lid on it. It's a way to keep a lid on it.
And I understand, and I just want to give one more example, and I know this is not happening in Fama Heights, but directly across, uh, Sheriff Road, I guess that's on the Chevrolet side, right next to the daycare. There's a large house there. They have a stack of four or five mattresses that's been there for months. That's not a Fama Heights problem, but I'm bringing that up as a real example. Because if people in Fama Heights, if they're discouraged by the large fees that Fama Heights is charging, what's going to stop them from putting their items on the curb? They're not going to want to pay for it or dumping, because we talked about dumping being a problem earl, earlier. If they don't want to pay these extreme prices, they're either going to dump it or they're going to put it on the curb and it's going to sit there like it's doing across the streets for Chevrolet. And I'm not exaggerating. It's been there since the fall.
Oh, don't worry, because I've called any number of times concerning that, because not only did I call for all that buildup out there, but I have called for those excessive cars that have been on that lot since I don't know when. And they have given me a tag number and every, you know, they give you a slip number as you call in. When you dial that 311 number, so I understand that part, but I'm not.
And we don't want that happening in Fama Heights. That's all I'm bringing up.
The fact of the matter is that a lot of time, we're trying to keep it to a good level. And like I said, we have four days where it's absolutely free. We'll be getting back to those two more days, but you, you have a couple of more months before they're, they're available to get free days. But until that time, the price that we charge and half of the time is sometimes maybe even lower, it's $30, you know? And then that includes, you don't have to pick it up, transport it down to the site and dispose of it. Yeah, so we're doing.
Yes, I think we should, we should look into reasonable fees. But $50 and $75 and $100 that you all were discussing during the work session, I don't think those were reasonable at all. That's just.
Those, those were for large, but it was big items. I forget. Well, right now, I don't have my list in front of me. That was for some major items, not the smaller. We're trying to, we're coming up with a revised plan and Councilmember Morris is going to have this into us where you're going to have three categories. And within those areas, you're going to have a small, a medium, and a large. And all of them are within reason. And like I said, most people, if they plan, they're going to have four days that they can make a choice to get it absolutely free. They don't even have to pay anything. It's only when people are putting them out during times when it's not that identified time that you have to pay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? Because we're about to, I'm about to accept a, a motion for adjournment.
That's it.
Who? You have a question? Oh, okay, yes.
Excuse me, citizens. This is Councilmember Mor, Morgan. Ms. Rumi texted me to say that she, we are hiring a third laborer. And she put the information on the website, the application. Thank you. So if you know anybody who needs a job right now, uh, we need a third laborer. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, girl, by the Councilmember. At this time, I will accept the motion for adjournment. A janitor.
Who personnel?
Okay, we got the paper. Somebody's got to get the record. All right. All right, who did the second? You, Councilmember? Okay. All right. Thank you all so very much for joining us this evening, citizens. Oh, okay. All right, okay. All right, all in favor of going to executive? All in favor. I have it. We're going to move to executive session. Thank you very much, citizens, for joining us this evening. You all have a wonderful night.